Go ahead and get started. Good afternoon, I hereby call the Palm Springs Special City Council Meeting of August 4th, 2021 to order. First, we'll have a pledge of allegiance. If Mayor Pro-Tim Middleton could please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I invite you to stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro-Tim. City Clerk, if you could please conduct a roll call.
Councilmember Garner? Councilmember Garner? Uh, Councilmember Cordes?
For the record, that all council members are present.
Oh. Council, can you not hear me?
There we go, we can hear you now.
Okay. Sorry about that. All council members are present. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. City Clerk, if you could please begin contacting speakers by telephone.
Jerry Keller, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you very much, Jerry Keller, Lulu, California Bistro. Very much appreciate the opportunity to make my feelings known. I think the city should be doing everything it can to help the parklets stay open, both large and small. I'm very much afraid in the next month that the new COVID strain is going to come in and can cause real problems that could actually cause restaurants on the inside to close down, and the city, the restaurants, people suffer if you don't have enough outside eating space. For the smaller restaurants, I believe the city should help them fix up their parklets. We'd be happy to help if we can, provide money, time, information. A few bad actors, just close them down, but let's make sure that as many parklets they open as possibly can. For Lulu and for Zin, we very much appreciate putting off the opening of arenas until we see what actually happens, so we can provide food for residents and for visitors in Palm Springs. There will still be visitors coming in, and we'll have to use proper masking and sanitation and everything we're doing now, but very much appreciate everything being put on hold, except to help the smaller parklets become more attractive and better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeffrey Bernstein, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you, dear council. My name is Jeffrey Bernstein, owner of Destination PSP. We've had a lot of ups and many more downs in the past 16 months with COVID, and like many others, we were excited when in June of this year, it seemed like we were finally over the worst. Infections decreasing and vaccinations in Palm Springs approaching 90%, we were optimistic. And now the Delta variant has thrown a wrench in things. However, we learned in the past that swift decisive action works. Ignoring the science and the numbers is when we've had problems. As much as I was hoping this would not happen again, I would strongly encourage you to reinstitute a citywide indoor mask mandate. The threat of the Delta variant is clear. It's too much to ask individual businesses to create their own mandate or rules, nor does it solve the problem of businesses who disregard health and safety issues. It's especially hard for small businesses to police this. I speak as a business owner, knowing that some customers will be unhappy. My staff is 100% vaccinated and required to wear masks, but many are older with underlying condition, health conditions. There's concern in having to deal with maskless customers even though they're vaccinated, and even though our store allows for social distancing. While I very much support our local events, and they are the livelihood for mine and many other businesses, I would also encourage you to look at larger events where crowds are in close contact. The city should consider requiring vaccination or a recent negative COVID test. We want to promote our cities as a safe city. That's a key draw for tourists and a key benefit for residents. If we do not take action now and things get worse, the effect is not only immediate, but on the entire season ahead, and we can't afford to let that happen. We are fortunate in that we're in a very slow part of our year. Mandates will not be pleasant, but it's much better to deal with it now than the potential risk. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. David Justin Lynch, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Yes, I am David Justin, David Justin Lynch, and have lived in Palm Springs for over 20 years. I am fully vaccinated. I strongly support requiring all City of Palm Springs employees to receive COVID-19 vaccinations. If they refuse, they should be fired. I also support requiring vaccination of all employees whose job involves public contact and/or contact with fellow employees and contractors. The law has been clear that these mandates are allowed. If employees sue over a vaccination requirement, they will lose and may have to pay the other side's attorney fees. The evidence is clear. Vaccines are 99.5% effective against severe disease and death. The only reason for not getting vaccinated is a verified medical excuse. Masks for fully vaccinated people are silly. To quote Bill de Blasio, Mayor of New York City, in the war against COVID, masks are a pea shooter, vaccines are a bazooka. The CDC has produced no evidence that masking fully vaccinated persons will stop the spread of COVID. CDC has justified its position with reasoning that, quote, "we really don't know, so it's better to be cautious." A fully vaccinated person wearing a mask is a political statement, not a scientifically based protection. The city should rely on evidence, not politics. The facts are that vaccines work, but masks are of unproven value. Any business can require a mask or require proof of vaccination if it wishes. If the city is inclined to adopt a mask mandate, it should accept private businesses requiring proof of vaccination. Customers will decide whether to patronize a particular business based on its policy. I personally will not patronize any restaurant that requires me to wear a mask. I will eat at home, and many other people may make the same choice.
Thank you. Bruce Hoben, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good afternoon. This is Bruce Hoben. I am a resident in Palm Springs. I'm also involved in the big rental industry, so I care about our tourists. I think needless to say, the veracity of this Delta version is far, far more dangerous than what we had to deal with 14 months ago. Unfortunately, different projections show different lengths of how long this is going to last, but no projection is showing we have hit the peak yet. So we have a ways to go here that could be weeks or more than a month. I highly encourage indoor masks everywhere, bars and restaurants. I would like to see that you either mandate or you recommend that they ask for vaccination cards or tests. If you leave it up to them, then certain restaurants will be safe places for us to go if a restaurant so chooses. When it comes to special events like Splash and the Dyna, those are potential super spreader events. We don't want other province town where we find out just exactly how many people are running around, both tested, sorry, vaccinated and not vaccinated. So I would ask you to remember one big thing. Please err on the side of caution in your decisions, and I appreciate all the fine work you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mariah Hansen, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Great. Thank you so much for allowing me a platform. As you know, I produce the Dyna Shore Weekend. It's taking place in two months, and of course, COVID is on everyone's mind. It's very important for me to be producing a very safe event, and so I want you to know that I would be in full support of a vaccination mandate and also a, or proof of COVID testing. So I wanted to express that support there because I think it's really important that we all have the same messaging, and we're already messaging that. And in addition to that, I would also like to let you know that this, this is going to be, you know, we, we, sure, we got SFO grants, but we're all in the weeds here, and the whole COVID compliance is going to be incredibly cumbersome. And I'm wondering if the city would consider allowing some of the larger events to have use of the mobile COVID testing, so that we can ensure that the event is safe, that people that don't have proof and can't even show proof of recent testing would be able to get testing right away. So, and, and, and any of the ways that the city can help in giving us guidance and support is greatly recommended. We're, none of us have experienced anything like this, but I certainly, as a promoter and, and a member of the Palm Springs community, want to do the right thing, want to have a safe event, but I want to have an event. And, and that's also important to me, too, that, that you guys just help us to do it safely, and, and please, any more lockdowns. Thank you very much for hearing me, and, you know, I appreciate you guys, and any help is, and guidance is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Aaron Velarde, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Good evening, and members of the, my name is Aaron Velarde, and I'm an organizer with UFCW Local 1167. UFCW 1167 represents 21,000 essential workers throughout the counties of Riverside, San Bernardino, Imperial, and Los Angeles. Our members and their families have been heavily impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. We have been closely monitoring the cases within our membership, and it's with a heavy heart that we have to report that we've seen COVID cases go up substantially within our members in the past several weeks, including among those who have been vaccinated. Grocery workers and hospitality workers are the canary in a coal mine. The numbers we have seen among our membership is warning to all of us that the ongoing danger of COVID and the new Delta variant. Given the recent spike in COVID cases, we must act now in order to get the virus under control. As we have seen since the onset of the pandemic, grocery workers and other essential workers are crucial to the well-being of our communities, and we must do everything we can to keep those workers as safe as possible. UFCW 1167 is in support of the reinstatement of face covering requirements in the City of Palm Springs for all individuals, regardless of vaccination status, in indoor public settings and in crowded outdoor settings. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Carlos Cota, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Carlos Cota, and I represent the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees. And first, I want to thank you all for taking up this critical subject and offer you a little perspective from the live events industry and the effects the pandemic has had on our businesses and our workers. Our entire industry virtually shut down day one of the pandemic, so for the last 18 months, all live events and everyone who depends on events from our businesses, to performers, designers, technicians, consultants, restaurants, hotels, venues, and everyone who depends on live events have been completely shut down and out of work. And along with being the first to shut down, we've been the last industry to, or industry sector to reopen, and we're just beginning to reopen over the last month or so. I personally, along with many industry groups and coalitions that I've been working with, we worked with the State of California and California Department of Public Health, CALOSHA, and all the appropriate entities, in an effort to reopen. We first developed safety protocols, designed insured safety for our workers, performers, and attendees, and then working on reopening guidelines. Once the effective vaccine was made available, we were able to move away from the colored tier system, and we're headed towards an effective reopening date, first slated for late September, early October. But with the steady rate of people getting vaccinated, the percentages increasing and infection rates declining steadily, we were able to move that date up several months to the June 15th reopening. We're just beginning to get back to work, and at the same time, we're seeing infection rates increasing rapidly because of the Delta variant, and I'm afraid we're headed towards another shutdown if something isn't done quickly. I'm urging the council to please look at the efforts being made in cities like New York and San Francisco, and consider requiring proof of vaccination or a recent clean COVID test to attend live events. It's the only way to keep our industry moving forward and reopening, and to keep the public safe while attending conventions, festivals, concerts, and other live events. I thank you all for your time and your effort.
Thank you. Wickham Zimmerman, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you, appreciate that. There have been extensive randomized controlled trial, RCT studies and meta-analysis reviews of RCT studies, all which show that respirators do not prevent respiratory influenza-like illnesses or respiratory illnesses. They're believed to be transmitted by droplets and aerosol particles. There's actually no scientific evidence that mask wearing is effective. In fact, scientific studies have concluded that masks are not effective in preventing respiratory influenza-like illnesses. I did provide an email. I sent some citations to studies that do provide that scientific backup, dating back to, I believe, 2006. The reason masks don't work to prevent transmission of viral respiratory diseases is because the main transmission path is what they call long residence time aerosol particles that are less than two and a half microns, which are too fine to be blocked, and, and the minimum ineffective dose, or, I'm sorry, the minimum of infective dose is smaller than one aerosol particle, so only taking one particle to infect somebody. Such particles that they're less than two and a half microns are part of air fluidity. They're not subject to gravitational sedimentation. They would not be stopped by long range inertial impact. This means basically that the slightest even momentary facial misfit of a mask or respirator renders the design filtration norm entirely irrelevant. And even without that, the filtration material itself, and then N95 mask, has an average pore size of .3 to, to, I'm sorry, three to five microns. So the openings in the N95 mask are actually larger than the virus particles. Wearing masks, particularly for extended times, can have significant negative effects. Hello?
Mr. Zimmerman, your time is over.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and City Council, that does conclude public comment. We had one caller we were not able to reach, which is Brad Anderson. We attempted four times.
Thank you, City Clerk. Our next item is discussion and consideration of additional face covering policy, mandatory vaccinations for city staff, and other possible changes to COVID-19 response policy. If we could have a staff report, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So we are here to talk about emerging changes in the pandemic environment and possible public policy response. First, I'd just like to ask for your understanding that we didn't have a more elaborate staff report. We were trying to get this together as quickly as possible. We were working on today's presentation up until the minute of starting the meeting, so also please forgive and understand any typos or formatting inconsistencies. It was really important to us to focus on the substance of today's presentation. And just to let you know what to anticipate, so that you know when to ask questions, we will focus initially on concurrent state of numbers, transmission, et cetera, locally and regionally, including some new data from our wastewater facility. We will then move into reviewing other kinds of policies that we're seeing in other cities and counties, especially in California, and other more progressive policies throughout the United States. We will review some survey data after that, that some of our business stakeholders have administered to get a sense of public opinion on this issue, and then lastly, transition to those policy considerations that are really the focus of today's meeting. So with that, that gives you an idea of kind of what's coming and when you can ask questions, and we will start by reviewing some of our current data, and Danny DeSelm's, our emergency management coordinator, will lead that conversation.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council. I'm going to echo what the city manager said, and please bear with us as we churn through these slides. It got sent at 4:25. The current status of vaccinations in the county, we just broke the 50% threshold yesterday. We're at 58% partially vaccinated, which is pretty good. We've seen an uptick in people going and seeking out the vaccine over the past couple of weeks. I'll refrain from speculating why. Here in Palm Springs, the situation is a little bit better. The, the colors have actually changed as of a few minutes ago. North Palm Springs is at 64% fully vaccinated, with 74% being partially vaccinated, and Southern Palm Springs is 72% fully vaccinated and 81% partially vaccinated. So our rate of vaccination is much higher than the rest of the county, and as you can see, the rest of the valley, it, it's a mix of higher numbers than 50%. So overall, looking pretty good here in the valley. These next three images or graphs are just some highlighting some of the state level data and the county as far as confirmed cases in the county and total testing. So back a couple of weeks ago, our positivity rate was down at 1.5%. That number is now back up to 10.6% throughout the county, averaged out over seven days. And you can see on all three of the graphs that there is a substantial uptick in both positivity rate and overall case count. And to look a little bit deeper, here's Palm Springs. This is going back over the past year. You can see the huge spike back in winter, and then the downtrend that we had for several months, and then for the past couple of weeks, we've seen gradual increase. Last week's cases were 109, which is 27%, 27 times higher than it was six weeks ago. We saw double the number of cases this week as last week. Just last, the week before last, there was only 57 new cases, so an obvious uptick. And the same trend at the county level, those numbers are 4,700 cases this week compared to 2,700 cases last week. So another substantial uptick. And then a closer look at the valley increases, like I said, Palm Springs had 109 over the past seven days, and you can see pretty high numbers across all the cities in the valley. But one good note that I want to call out is there have been zero deaths over the past week, and that is a trend that we're seeing. The, the deaths are not trending the same as they were in the winter. And that's all for me for right now.
So next, Joel Montalvo, City Engineer, will present some of the wastewater data.
Good evening, or good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. The metrics for the, the city are very consistent with the state and the county. You can see here in the slide before you, on July 19th, we were about 200,000 copies per liter, which represents approximately 1,700 cases. And in July, when we took the next test, which would be the week of July 26th, we were up at 700,000 copies per liter, which represents about 5,600 estimated cases. So this graph here pretty much represents, and it looks very similar to what we saw before with the state and the county. You can tell that in, one of the things that's interesting about this slide, or like I want to point out, in June, we had a viral, or I'm sorry, in May, the lowest viral load we had was around 3,209. That actually was a viral load that we couldn't quantify how many cases were in the city, or that we, we thought were in the city. So in June, right around that time, we, we stopped testing, or at least we thought we were going to stop testing, but in, in, actually in June, we were able to take, we did take another test, and the viral load in June was about 8,300, and that represented approximately 89 cases. Then fast forward to July, in July, you can see that we went all the way up to 700,000 cases. So that pretty much is mirroring what's happening at the state and county level. Sorry, I went a little bit too fast without looking at the, at the slide, but there you go. So one of the things that we also are able to tell in our tests is whether the Delta variant is present. So in July, you can see that July 19th, the Delta variant was present. So what's interesting, in July 26th, the actual Alpha or UK variant was actually also detected. On July 29th, it was not. So that's an interesting fact there. So that's about, and the Delta variant, you can see that in July, it was around 600, 600,000, and then it climbed up a little bit more to 160,000. That's kind of the presentation I have for you. That's kind of the presentation I have for you.
And Madam Mayor, we apologize for the shuffling of slides. So what this is, is there was a case study the CDC did of an outbreak in Barnstable County, Massachusetts. So that's the area around Cape Cod. The outbreak was about 500 people tested positive. What was substantial, though, is 75% of those, well, 74% were fully vaccinated adults. So 346 of the people that tested positive had been fully vaccinated. And they wouldn't, when they did further analysis, 90% of what was identified was the Delta variant. So one other thing about this study is this was during outdoor activities in the middle of July, large gathering events where people weren't masked. But all of that breakthrough, the 74% people that were vaccinated getting COVID, is what the CDC is calling to our attention, which is a cry for, you know, increased safety measures that municipalities need to take. That's all for this slide.
So Council, this is just a graph showing some of that. That was just covered with the number of fully vaccinated individuals in the specimen collection. And then as we move on, this is probably a good time to pause, actually. Are there any questions about our current state and some of the numbers that we're seeing that are the preface to today's conversation?
Councilmember Corey?
Yeah, I just had a question on the wastewater numbers, which looks like a 300% increase in one week, which seems really significant. But can we just go back on, what is the estimated range of active COVID in Palm Springs based on the wastewater numbers? I think it went, you went over it, I just don't, it was quick.
Yeah, if we can get the presentation back up.
Yeah, so let me get back to the presentation, you can actually see.
Thank you.
Am I going forward or backward? Okay, sorry.
Can you go forward?
Sorry about that, apologize, not. One more.
And Madam Mayor, while he's doing that, if he could speak really close to the mic, it would help because I'm having a very hard time hearing him. So if the people in the chambers could be almost next to the mic, it would be very much appreciated.
Yeah, I actually had my mask on when I was talking. Apologize for that. So there's the slide that represents, that shows the cases or the copies per liter, which on July 26th were 723,000. And the estimated cases for that copies per liter are approximately 5,698.
Okay. So that's the middle of the range that they give us, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all I had on this part.
I have another question on that if I can. So are we still testing weekly? I know back when, at the height of the surge, the last surge, we were comparing weekend numbers to week, week time numbers to assess, you know, tourists and the impact of their viral load versus residents. So are we looking at that data or have any information about that data at this time? I see July 26th was a Monday.
So we had essentially wrapped down the testing and just recently started testing again. So from here on out, we will be doing weekly tests, so we'll be able to have that information.
Thank you. I think that's really important for our community to know. And then could you show us the slide again showing our wastewater data over time? Do you have there? So that makes it look like we have 720, 723,000 viral copies per liter, right? And back in November, it was only 293,000, is that right? So you're saying that there are significantly more viral copies per liter in the wastewater compared to even November of last year?
That's correct. That's what the slide's representing. One point to note here is in December, the highest load was around 2.5 million copies per liter. But I guess the only difference in November and now is the, we are now testing and folks that actually are vaccinated are also, could be shedding as well. So that's the one variant in the comparison between those two numbers.
Thank you. Do we have any data about the viral shed for people who are vaccinated?
We actually asked Dr. Nash of DT Molecular that question, and right now, they don't have any technology that would be able to separate vaccinated from unvaccinated.
Thank you. Thank you. This data is incredibly helpful. So thank you to staff for your leadership in starting this up again. Very helpful for us and the community to know about. Are there other questions for staff at this time? Mayor Protem?
Do we have any comparative data for other cities on wastewater?
I do not believe we have any. We haven't reached out. I do know the opposite is true. Other cities that have started doing these testings, or we're doing, we're reaching out to the city of Palm Springs. I think DT Molecular, GT Molecular was pointing actually to the city of Palm Springs as a leader in interpreting the data. So the other cities are looking to us to show them how and what we've been doing.
And again, we're not seeing any new deaths in our city within the last few weeks. Is that true on a county and a statewide basis?
I'm going to have Danny answer that question.
Mayor Protem, to answer your question, it's not a zero deaths across the county, but here in the valley, it's been very, very low for the past several months. We haven't had any major spikes in deaths in the valley probably over the past three months. And the county has really low numbers. I can actually get those to you if you'd like, but it's not a null on the deaths.
Right. And the numbers in terms of vaccination, those are higher in populations that are older because, as I understand it, there's still children that are too young to be vaccinated. What are the rules regarding at what age a vaccination can take place right now?
Mayor Protem, so we're still only able to vaccinate children 12 years age and older. So when you see those statistics and the data, they're not removing the people that are 11 and under. So even if we were at 100% of 12 and over, it would still not reflect that in the numbers. I do know that they are working on getting that vaccination capability to younger children, but I can't speak to that at this time.
And to be very clear, I find it alarming that we're still unable to protect the youngest in our population.
Thank you.
If I can, Danny, while you're there, just one follow up. Do you remember what the lag time was? I know we're a week behind, right, in getting our wastewater numbers and people, from the wastewater numbers going up till we start seeing hospitalizations. I know people who are vaccinated are less likely to be hospitalized and clearly much less likely to die. But do you remember the lag time from when we had other sort of surges happening?
Yes, Councilmember. So the lag time varies between just a couple of days to, for positive cases to settle out to what zip code they came from, and goes all the way up to 14 days for deaths to kind of stabilize. So anywhere in that window between three and 14 days, your numbers are rough, but still good.
And Councilmember, the other thing, and might have been the point of your question as well, is that there is a pretty significant lag between transmission, when someone might first contract the illness, to when they become ill enough to be, you know, near fatal or eventually fatal. And my recollection from the duration of the pandemic is that could be as late as 45 days. So somebody that contracts the illness today or last week, you know, is still in pretty precarious, precarious position potentially for a month.
Okay. Now, that's helpful because it helps guide us. And just following up on Mayor Protem's question on children who still cannot get vaccinated. You know, initially, there was some thought children wouldn't get as sick. Do you have some, any info on sort of data on what we're seeing with children who are, do you get COVID? I know school started today, so I think a lot of parents are interested in the answer to this, as are all of us.
So if we go back to the beginning of COVID, where children just were not getting sick, we're not seeing that as the case anymore. Children are starting to become infected, not at as high of a rate of prevalence as, you know, adults, but there are children that are getting the different strains of COVID.
Thank you.
I have a question on the data if I can that just occurred to me. So you said you showed the viral load over time, and we said that we didn't know if some of that viral shedding was due to vaccinated people. But I know that a lot of our community was vaccinated during the time where the viral shedding was very, very low. So does that give us any indication of those might actually show active cases versus vaccinated people?
I don't think I have any information on that. I don't, I don't believe our Dr. Nash would be able to give us any information on that. We can ask the question, but I don't have any information today.
Thank you. That's helpful. And thank you to our city staff for staffing all of this up and acting essentially as a public health department here, which we don't have in the city of Palm Springs. So thank you for your excellent work, knowing that Joel is the city engineer and providing very helpful information to us about COVID. So thank you. Any other questions from Council before staff continues on in their presentation?
Okay, excellent.
I don't.
So Council, obviously, this is reason for concern. We do have probably more questions than answers, especially when we look at things like the wastewater data, when you have a convergence of trends, higher rates of vaccination, you're picking up particles in the wastewater. But when you see some agreement between the data points, because we're seeing an increase both in the wastewater testing and in other areas of transmission in the county, locally, et cetera, then, you know, we start to grow our concern and think that we need to speak with you and see how we need to respond. So if we can queue up the presentation again. I'll just get back to where we were. Okay, so the next thing we want to do, just as a reminder of where we're at today, is current state mask requirements. So everyone is required to wear masks in the following settings. That includes public transit, healthcare settings, including long-term care facilities, adult and senior care facilities, indoors at K through 12, childcare, or other youth settings. So that includes things like our kids' camps, state and local correctional facilities and detention centers, homeless shelters, emergency shelters, and cooling centers. Masks are required for unvaccinated people and recommended for everyone in indoor public places like retail, restaurants, theaters, family entertainment centers, meetings, state and local government offices that serve the public. You know that since the CDC and the state changed guidance to emphasize a recommendation to wear masks, here at City Hall and other city facilities, we have implemented a mask mandate. So if it's strong enough to recommend, then it's good enough for us to make that recommendation a requirement. So that's true of our customers and our staff at this point. The following individuals are exempt, of course, from wearing masks. Children of two years old, people with medical condition, mental health condition, or disability that precludes wearing a mask, people for whom seeing the mouth is essential for communication, and people for whom wearing a mask would create a risk as they work. Current state mask guidance for businesses, in settings where businesses, venue operators, or hosts elect to require masks, they may choose to do any of the following. Provide information to all patrons, guests, and attendees regarding vaccination requirements, and allow individuals to self-attest that they are fully vaccinated, or meet and approve masking exemption prior to entry. They can implement vaccine verification to determine whether individuals are required to wear a mask or require all patrons to wear masks. So quite a lot of flexibility there with local businesses. We have heard anecdotally that what can be hard, business to business, is implementing these things when it's not clear what a neighboring business might do, or without the full backing of public policy from the local government. And just to make clear what's written down there in red, no person can be prevented from wearing a mask as a condition of participation in an activity or entry into a business. So in regards to employees, Cal OSHA, I think, is probably still yet to catch up on some of the very recent changes in guidance. But as of now, they've aligned workplace mask requirements with general mask guidance from the Health Department. So masks are not required outdoors, except during outbreaks, regardless of vaccination status. Masks are not required for fully vaccinated employees indoors, but they are recommended. And employers must document employees' vaccination status. There are some settings where masks are required regardless of vaccination status, but in outbreaks, all employees must wear masks indoors and outdoors when six feet of physical distance cannot be maintained. Employers must provide unvaccinated employees with NIOSH-certified respirator masks for voluntary use when working indoors or in a vehicle with others. And unvaccinated workers must wear masks in all indoor spaces. So given some of that, the recent changes, both from the CDC and the state Health Department, we've seen a lot of other local agencies start to react. So here's a list of a handful. In Los Angeles, for instance, they're requiring masks indoors for all, regardless of vaccination status. They intend to require for their employees vaccination or to submit to regular COVID testing. And there's a proposal right now to require vaccinations to enter public indoor spaces. Some of the details of that, as we'll discuss kind of generally for all these examples, are still pending, but this is so far what some communities have committed to. San Francisco has announced an employee vaccine mandate for all of its employees. They're currently evaluating some of the rules with FDA and DOJ opinions regarding those forced requirements, Purb as well. I think at first, they were anticipating that some of these mandates might not be implemented until after full FDA approval, but with some recent clarification that an employer, even in a union environment, can require those vaccines, that timeframe will likely accelerate. New York City is one of the more ambitious of this group, mandating proof of vaccine for most indoor activities, at least entertainment-type venues, restaurants, gyms, special events. Los Angeles County, the board is to review a mandatory vaccine for county employees next week, so they're considering something similar that San Francisco and others are looking to implement. Long Beach is rolling out mandatory vaccine policy requiring weekly testing of unvaccinated employees, requiring proof of vaccination, not just self-attestation. And in Pasadena, the Rose Bowl evidently is still being planned, but masks will be required for all. And they are implementing mandatory masks indoors for all and requiring all city employees to get vaccinated. Or I believe they may allow for frequent testing, but I'm not sure if they're going the route of San Francisco just to require. But that really sets the stage for a handful of large areas of potential policy. One governing local agency employees, another regarding the community, that's kind of broadly broken down into areas, including masks, other proof of vaccinations, and then I think the special events are being treated a little differently than some of the strict indoor venues that are, you know, more regular restaurants and gyms and theaters, et cetera. So are there any questions about that before we move into some of the survey results that indicate some of the public opinion from Palm Springs residents and businesses?
Any questions from Council? I don't see any.
That's really meant to articulate the spectrum. I'm sure there are countless examples of communities doing things in between what we just described there.
All right. Before we move on, Mayor Protem Middleton has a question.
All right, thank you. This question may be more appropriate for Mr. Bellinger, but what is the nature of the legal challenges, if any, to these various municipal and county actions? And what is our understanding of our discretion legally in these areas?
That's a very good question. There have been a few court challenges to vaccination requirements in different settings. For instance, in Texas, there was a private hospital that the nurses and medical staff objected to the vaccination requirement. The court there upheld- The court there upheld that vaccination requirement. Of course, that was in a healthcare setting, but as we see this Delta variant and possibly other variants coming forward, I suspect that most courts, if they look at it, would uphold a city's ability to require vaccinations of its employees, as well as possibly for kind of optional indoor settings such as restaurants, entertainment venues, gyms. Of course, there would have to be certain exceptions, medically required exceptions, as well as for those who have sincerely held religious views about vaccinations. But otherwise, I think courts are going to give considerable deference to a city dealing with these public health situations.
And recent case involving, I believe you see that the Public Employees Retirement Board confirmed that this is not an area that's subject to collective bargaining and that the employer has the right to mandate without negotiation. Am I correct in my understanding?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor Protam Middleton. The Purb Board just recently ruled, I believe it was yesterday, that the decision to require vaccinations of employees is a managerial decision. There may be additional elements that are subject to meet and confer obligations in terms of the effects of that managerial decision, but overall, the decision is up to the employer.
And that was a public employee case, but what I'm hearing is that both public and private employers have very broad discretion when it comes to requiring vaccination of their employees.
Correct. There is no, there is no reason why that Purb decision wouldn't also be applicable to private employers.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Thank you.
Okay, so we will proceed, looking at some of these survey results. Very grateful for the agencies that very quickly administered surveys among some of their members, really got a lot of very good data very quickly. So we've segregated these by the agency that administered the survey. A lot of these questions are very similar, but not all of them are quite identical, so we just thought it would be easiest to kind of break them out this way. So Main Street administered a survey. You can see on the right-hand side of the slide that there were 73 respondents, and the questions asked include: Should the city of Palm Springs require that all employees and customers wear a mask when inside a business or attending an indoor event? And you can see that 64% of the respondents said yes. Should the city of Palm Springs require masks for large outdoor events? Slightly less popular, but still 57.5% indicated yes. And should the city of Palm Springs require proof of vaccination or a negative COVID test to allow people to attend events such as music festivals and concerts? Even more overwhelmingly, people at 75% indicated yes. Again, that's about 73 responses overall. The Chamber of Commerce also administered a survey. I believe this has the most robust response rate. So again, similar questions: Should the city of Palm Springs require that all employees and customers wear a mask when inside a business or attending an indoor event? About 62% yes. Down below, 50% indicating that the city of Palm Springs should require masks for outdoor large events. And then again, for requiring proof of vaccination or a negative test to allow people to attend events such as music festivals and concerts, those large-scale events, 68% indicating yes. So broad support across the board. That support thus far in the survey results, and I think throughout, is strongest in the indoor settings or large events, and perhaps weakest, but still representing a majority for outdoor events, large outdoor events. PS Resorts did something very similar. Should the city of Palm Springs require masks for large outdoor events? 52% yes. Should the city of Palm Springs require that all employees and customers wear a mask when inside a business or attending an indoor event? 79% said yes. And should the city of Palm Springs require proof of vaccination or a negative COVID test to allow people to attend events such as music festivals or concerts? 83% said yes. Desert Business Association, should there be a mask requirement for patrons indoors regardless of vaccination status? So slightly similar question, 77% said yes. Should there be a requirement for proof of vaccination for recent COVID tests for inside businesses? 71% said yes. If proof of vaccination or recent COVID test is required, should masks also be required? Still 71% say yes. And for large outdoor events, should proof of vaccination or recent COVID test be required? 74% say yes. Palm Springs Hospitality Association, ARPIA, this was a fairly small sample size, I believe, comprised of the board, so it looks like a total of maybe 20, low 20s. Should the city of Palm Springs require masks for large outdoor events? 36% yes, 63% no. Should the city of Palm Springs require that all employees and customers wear a mask when inside a business or attending an indoor event? A slight majority, 52%, indicate yes. And then, should the city of Palm Springs require proof of vaccination or a negative COVID test to allow people to attend events such as music festivals and concerts? The majority, 59%, indicating no. So that gives us kind of a snapshot of where we are. Again, I think we're, we've outlined a few options here in those broad areas of public policy I indicated before, so maybe it's appropriate to go through each one and then check with council on direction and guidance. The first is regarding employees and facilities. So this is really the thing that's most immediate in our purview. As I indicated earlier, we were quick to re-implement an indoor mask mandate. That seemed like a very simple and easy thing, but clearly, there is more you can do. Some of these options are a little more extreme, again, only to try to give you the full spectrum of options to prime the thought process. But clearly, we could continue to defer to the state. We've deviated from that already a little bit in requiring the indoor masks. And then some additionally restrictive, or you could view them as protective options: Require masks for all individuals in city facilities regardless of vaccination status, that's where we are. Require proof of vaccination for all city employees when masks are no longer required. So previously, we had taken a page from OSHA, like a lot of other communities, allowing for self-attestation. We were in the process of kind of reconciling what we were seeing in City Hall and other places in terms of people not wearing masks with the numbers that we saw that were attesting that they'd been vaccinated. I think at any point in the future where, if we were to go back to no masks, and again, pending any additional direction from council, at that point, rather than self-attestation, we would require proof of vaccination status for an individual to remove a mask. We can limit in-person meetings and enforce social distancing, so one area we'll want some guidance is with commission, council and other meetings. Administratively, I think it would make sense for us to continue to use Zoom meetings for staff meetings and things like that where practical, just given that it's a reasonable alternative and an added measure of safety. You could do things like re-implement a work-from-home type option. You could require all city employees to be vaccinated in order to enter city facilities. That could be with or without a frequent testing option as an alternative. Again, the city attorney Ballinger mentioned some of the exemptions that would likely need to be in place for that, but that would apply to most employees. We could require vaccinations for all individuals that enter city-owned facilities, with the exception of the airport, so that, I don't know that anybody has done that yet, but we have seen the communities that are looking at implementing a vaccine requirement for other indoor-type establishments. Presumably, that could include some of the city facilities. And of course, we could close facilities to the public. We reopened, oh geez, it's been a few months, but, but not long before most of the restrictions were lifted June 15th. I can't remember the exact date at this point, but it hasn't been very long, so that also remains an option. And of course, there are more than these, but this is meant to help give you a spectrum of ideas to consider. And with that, if it pleases the mayor and council, we can pause here and seek direction.
Thank you. Direction and discussion from council on those items. Councilmember Garner.
Thank you. I'm just going to get right to it. I think we should require masks at indoor venues. I'd like to hear thoughts on outdoor, but I'm more hesitant on that. And I think we should require proof of vaccination or negative COVID tests for large-scale events. It just seems like the right thing to do based on the data that we're receiving, and while public input in these matters is, I don't think, the tipping point at all, because we want to rely on the science and the data and the health experts, but it is good to know that we are getting some positive feedback and support of those two things from our business community as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Corr.
Great. Thank you, mayor, and thank you for your work to get this discussion going. And so I agree with Councilmember Garner. I think masks should be required indoors in businesses. I think that's important. Having been on calls with the GM breakfast this morning and Main Street yesterday, businesses want us to do this, and they feel, you know, they said they'd much rather be able to point and say, "The city's making us do this," when they have customers who are trying to argue with them. And it is our job to protect the public health and help them do what they want to do. As far as, I think outdoors at bars and restaurants, I think, I don't think we should require masks or proof of vaccination. Masks when you're not eating or drinking, though, I think we should require outdoors. I think indoors, we should require either a recent COVID test or proof of vaccination, because people are going to be taking their masks off. What we heard from, what I heard from most of the restaurants and we're seeing from the businesses, they're really scared about their employees, and they don't want to see us start pushing tables six feet apart, and they don't want to see indoors closed down. So I do think we should require that. I know that in the last hour, six of the bar restaurants on Arenas are requiring vaccination or a test within 72 hours to enter. So a lot of businesses are doing it on their own, and I think they want to see us require it for the same reasons. It makes it much easier for them to enforce it. I think for large outdoor events, and having heard from Mariah from the Dyna and Sense from Splash House, I, you know, we know there are a lot of super-spreader events, outdoor events, even with people who are vaccinated. I think masks are really hard to enforce at a large outdoor event, and I, from at least the event planners I've heard from, what we see from the tennis tournament, from others, is they would prefer vaccination or testing. And I know Splash House is going to have rapid testing on-site, and people can pay to get tested right there before they come in. So I think those are the right things as far as staff. Obviously, we want everyone to get vaccinated. It would be great if everyone's staff got vaccinated. I think we probably need a little more legal information and meeting with our bargaining units on that, but I would hope we would go in that direction. Sort of put people in a position where they have to work from home because a handful won't get vaccinated, doesn't seem fair. And that's what's so frustrating. This moment did not have to happen. And it's happening because too many people are not getting vaccinated. And, you know, I've heard from one or two people that we should let people decide if they want to wear masks and get vaccinated. If they don't, you know, people don't like it, they should stay home. And I actually think it's the other way around. If you don't want to get vaccinated, that's your right, but it doesn't give you the right to put other people at risk. We're all allowed to drink, we're allowed to drive, but you can't drink and drive. So if you want to take risks for yourself, that's fine, but it's not okay to put other people in harm's way by not getting vaccinated and then putting yourself in a small store at a big event where you're spreading it, especially, you know, for employees or for people going to events or restaurants, put kids. They're, you know, people who are vaccinated still are going to get and carry the virus, even if they're not anywhere near as likely to get sick. And kids on the child have absolutely no immunity and no opportunity to get into vaccination. And to put kids at risk for serious health or death is not acceptable. It's just not acceptable. And ultimately, our first job is to public health, our second is the economy, and both of those get protected if we do more to stop the spread of this variant and give people a reason to get vaccinated, because if you want to do things, you're going to have to do what's best and not put other people at risk. So that's my, my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember Corr. Mayor Protam Middleton.
Well, I've heard a lot of things that I want to comment about, and almost all of them agree with, but I wanted to try to stay first with issues around city facilities and city employees, and then move into the broader questions around the city itself and our businesses and special events and things of that nature. I believe very strongly that we have the legal authority to impose a vaccination requirement or frequent testing for our employees, and I feel very strongly that we should enact that rule. And I'm, I'm as pro-labor as you are going to find anywhere. And this is one of those occasions where management does have prerogatives and rights, and management should assert its right to require employees of the city of Palm Springs to be vaccinated, to show proof of that vaccination, or to show a recent and regular negative test in order to conduct their work. We should require of our staff and of anyone visiting our facilities to wear a mask when they are interacting with any other individual, whether that be indoors or outdoors. And we should require our employees to, to remain masked while they are walking around hallways and things of that nature. And yes, I have to remind myself to put on the mask when leaving my office, to go down the hall to the restroom and, and the like. We all forget from time to time, but it is important that we set the right example. For access to public buildings that are city buildings, I believe that that same masking requirement should be required for individuals to access our facilities. And I am, I am very close to being comfortable with the requirement that an individual, in order to enter a public building of the city of Palm Springs, be required to show either proof of vaccination or that they have a recent negative COVID test. I'd like to see more research on the part of staff before we make that leap to require that to enter our buildings, but it is something that I am certainly very open to requiring. And I know Justin and his team will remind me if I missed anything when it comes to our buildings and to our staff. And again, those requirements in terms of being masked by our staff should apply not only when they are in our facilities, but when they are performing their duties outside of our buildings. Thank you.
And just for quick clarification, if I can, Mayor Protam and council, that is where we've drawn the line, at least currently administratively, is that if outdoors and performing a task where you're interfacing with an individual, you're also expected to wear a mask. If you're outside performing a task and not interfacing with an individual, especially in areas where you might have sufficient distance, you're not required. Right now, the way that's written, I think it would also mean if you happen to be passing by members of the public, not in a densely crowded environment, but where, you know, there happen to be people around, but you're not interfacing, you would also be allowed to leave the mask off, but as soon as you're actually interfacing with another human being, it would be expected to go on.
I agree with that interpretation, but I would remind staff, we have a responsibility to set an example, and that casual passing by needs to be a very substantial distance.
Thank you. Councilmember Woods, do you have any general comments that you'd like to make? I know we went into general comments, and then I'm going to ask staff to put up when you're done and I'm done.
you're done and I'm done, the list of recommendations that they made or the options available on that last slide, so then we can go through them and discuss them in detail. But go ahead first, Councilmember Woods.
Thank you. It seems there's two questions. One is vaccinations, and the second is wearing of masks. And I think that we learned from Provincetown and more recent data that even vaccinated people can get COVID. You may not have, you may not die from it, and the symptoms may not be as good, but you can still get it. So vaccinations, to me, seems like a positive thing to protect our employees and to protect our citizens and our residents. And then the second question is masking, and I, this is more of a question, I guess, is masking obviously helps in the transmission of, to suppress the transmission of the virus from one person to the other. And is that, is that proven, or what information do we have on the benefits of masking?
Councilmember Woods, I'm happy to provide what I know. It's been a little while since I did a pretty extensive literature review, but the, the research that I found in the earlier stages of the pandemic was that while it's true that for influenza and numerous other respiratory illnesses that masks have found to be ineffective, that in the case of COVID in particular, they're found to be effective. I agree with a caller who made comments earlier that those tests have not been the highest level of rigor. Some of them have been anecdotal, but there have been some meta-analyses performed that, that look across the spectrum of tests and find a fair amount of evidence that wearing masks reduces transmission, at least of COVID-19. Don't know exactly how that might be changing as new variants emerge, but, but that was reconfirmed. In fact, there were a number of scholarly periodicals that had given initial guidance indicating the lack of evidence for mask effectiveness, and then had later reversed the decision with the emergence of that evidence that I'm citing. So that's the last that I have heard and read, is that they are still, there's evidence. I think we fall short of saying proof, but substantial evidence that they are effective.
And I think on a national level, what we're seeing is, like with the airlines and different other institutions, where masking is actually being required because it's, it's a, it's a full belief that masking does help suppress the virus from being transmitted from person to person, and it appears that this new, the new variants are highly transmissible. So there may be, it appears that both vaccination and masking has benefits to the population. So what I've heard from my fellow council members seems to be in step with that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone, for your comments and for meeting in this emergency special meeting for our community who's been involved, and really our staff for leading the way and putting this together. We very much appreciate your work on this, and I think we've learned, as one caller said, as Jeffrey Bernstein said, swift decisive, decisive action works, and that's what we're trying to take now. Palm Springs has continued to lead the way and try to provide that decisive action so that we can prevent a surge, so that we can keep our workers and our businesses safe, that we can keep our economy open. So thank you for everyone, for your time in considering these issues and the urgency. So I agree with everything that's been said, and I, I'll have staff walk us through each item so that we can make sure to give you the direction that you need. But I also support requiring universal face coverings in indoor public places, regardless of vaccination status, recommending face coverings in outdoor, outside places when social distancing is not possible. I would like us to collect proof of vaccination or negative COVID testing from our staff. I know we're going to ask city staff to look into that, to talk to our bargaining units or our union, our unions, to go over that with employees. I'd like to see it as, you know, a requirement if we can, because first and foremost, keeping our employees safe is, is a priority and is our main job, first and foremost. And so I think that will keep our employees safe and their families, as Councilmember Corr said, right? I think we need to keep City Hall at this point open and open for the public. This is just the new normal. We, you know, want to minimize transmission as much as possible, minimize unnecessary interaction, but, you know, we have to continue to perform the city's business and the people's business, and our employees being vaccinated is really key, knowing that some people need reasonable accommodations and might be testing, and we can allow for that. And I'd like to see us require vaccination or negative test for large-scale events and gatherings, especially indoor and ticketed events, since they have the ability to provide that and collect the proof. And then I think we can discuss requiring masks in crowded outdoor spaces. I think staff is going to present to us, you know, questions about Village Fest or any of the parades that are coming up, so we can discuss that. But overall, I'm really proud of our city. We've done our part. You know, it's really upsetting that we're back in this place because we were hoping that we didn't have to be. So our community continues to step up. You know, eighty, over an 80% vaccination rate in our community. We offered our convention center for free. We got 42,000 vaccinations in arms. You know, our businesses are stepping up to ask for us to take this action, and really everyone's coming together on this. So just grateful that we can take action now to hopefully save lives and prevent another shutdown that will devastate our economy. So, Justin, if you can put up that last slide about the options for public employees and facilities.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And, and we do have a couple other slides to guide some of the conversation on community and events and other things. We've made substantial progress in that conversation already, but if we could zero in on employees and city facilities, what I'm hearing from Council is that, one, we should absolutely continue our mandatory mask policy and make sure that we are kind of emphasizing that we do set an example and erring on the side of caution when wearing masks whenever it's questionable, but certainly requiring it indoors or outdoors when interfacing with members of the public. I'm also hearing broad support for required vaccination or frequent testing. It sounds like some of the preference is to move toward vaccination. You know, I, I would say that anytime you have what can be deeply held convictions or beliefs, both those that might qualify for an exemption and some of those that may not, you know, the, the consequence of making it, you know, an absolute is that we, we could lose some team members, and, and that may be okay. I know that I've read at least one anecdotal case where a Houston hospital system, and I don't know how large the staffing was there, but reported the loss of approximately 150 employees, both through resignation and termination when the mask requirement, or sorry, the vaccine requirement went into place. So with that said, I would ask Council to kind of reconcile if we're able to start with something like a vaccination with frequent testing as, as an option. I know we would want to meet and confer with our, our labor groups regardless, but is there, one thing we need to reconcile, is there a strong preference to move immediately to mandatory vaccination? Or can we initially work with vaccination or frequent testing? That seems like the two big ones, and then I think some of the smaller things that we didn't touch on, but consistent with these policies, would be that we'd continue to leverage remote work when possible, not move immediately to any kind of remote work or, or closure of city facilities, but to rely instead on masks, vaccines, and frequent testing of staff. Is, is that accurate, or are there other things we want to discuss strictly relating to city staff and city facilities?
That sounds accurate to me. Based on what I heard from Council, are there other comments from council members on those issues?
I concur that employees should have the right to demonstrate a negative test, and there should be some exceptions, but the proof should be for the individual who does not wish to be vaccinated to demonstrate that they are COVID-free. The responsibility should not fall to the overwhelming majority of employees who have chosen to protect their health and those of others. Those individuals who have a legal right not to be vaccinated or choose not to be vaccinated are going to have to prove that they are not COVID-infected.
Thank you. I agree that getting vaccinated is obviously the ideal here because even testing within 72 hours is not foolproof. You see super spreader events from a, events that everyone had a negative COVID test for entry, right? So it takes a while for those tests, there's errors in those tests. So, City Attorney, if you could explain for someone who's watching, you know, if you need reasonable accommodations, if you have a disability and can't get vaccinated, for example, or if you have deeply held religious views on vaccines or something like that, what is our legal ability to enforce vaccination or testing with employees?
So we can, we can, as a blanket rule, we can impose it. It's then up to an individual to demonstrate that they qualify for an exception, either because of medical necessity, you know, with a note from their doctor, et cetera, or if they have a sincerely held religious belief. The burden is then shifted to them to demonstrate that they qualify for one of those exceptions.
Thank you. Councilmember Corr.
Yeah. And I agree with all that. I would just say for, you know, we're dealing with employees, as we're right now talking about, we want to make sure it's the most accurate test, that, you know, PCR test, the rapid tests, while still helpful, have a high, you know, false negative rate. And there are some rapid PCR tests. I think those are more expensive, but, you know, at pharmacies now, you're not charged for PCR tests, and they tend to be turning them around in about a day, a day and a half. So, you know, and it would need to be frequent testing for the reasons the mayor just set out.
Other comments?
And Mayor, could I ask, as long as we're talking about something like testing as an alternative, I think for administrative ease and to strike a good balance between still offering a high measure of protection, but, but making it logistically feasible, given the predominance of a four-day work schedule with the city, a once-weekly test that would kind of cover a week's shift seems like it would be most appropriate. If we start to get into some odd hours, even say 72 or something like that, we, we may find ourselves in a situation, taking a test maybe with one day left of a shift, not even having the results and needing another going into the shift. So if there, if, if it's agreeable and consistent with your direction to kind of administer that logistically, given people's shift work, I, I think that certainly makes sense.
Thank you. I'd like to see us give direction to the city manager to make those, you know, practical decisions with Council's overall direction on policy. So some of those issues about working from home and, you know, employee schedules, I think that is all within your purview, and that's what the Council has typically done on these matters for the city manager. Does that work, or do you need more specific direction from us?
Council, that's all I need at this point. I, I think it likely suggests with regard to some of our commission and committee meetings, subcommittees, et cetera, that we would continue in a remote format, but I want to confirm that. Certainly, it seems like we would not be asking people to congregate in, in public, especially before we've made decisions like requiring vaccinations of those attendants, attendees. So am I right that we would likely stick in a more remote format for those meetings for the time being?
Yes. Any comments on that issue? Everyone agrees, that's unanimous.
Okay, excellent. So if we can bring the presentation back up, we will move on to some of those community issues that we had discussed. Let's see, for, for citywide type guidance, I don't think we need to read through this at this point. Where I heard broad agreement was requiring masks indoors, and then I, I heard some consistency, but a little bit of inconsistency with whether or not to require proof of vaccination at certain indoor facilities or perhaps at certain outdoor events. So I'd like to get some additional feedback there, and, and it's worth mentioning at this point that I think it's just important to understand our administrative capacity. I think some of the other communities that have done this are probably asking these questions right now, which is, you know, how, how do you execute? When you look at something like a mask mandate, you know, our first line of defense, frankly, is those merchants and businesses that can simply say, you know, "We need a mask," and then when an individual gets combative, hopefully that doesn't happen, but if so, that's a really good time for police or code to intervene. I, I think the area of requiring vaccines is certainly something that we can do and help enforce. I just want to point out that, you know, there is more difficulty in doing that. There's a little more interpretation. We have visitors from lots of different places. I don't know how much consistency there is in the documentation of proof of vaccination. You know, we will almost certainly have claims of, "I'm fully vaccinated, but I, I forgot," or "I lost," or "My wallet was stolen," or, or other circumstances that just aren't quite as cut and dry as you must have a mask to enter. So I, I would expect that we will get numerous other calls, some of them for patrons who aren't convinced somebody provided sufficient proof, or perhaps from merchants who are struggling to understand whether somebody has supplied adequate proof. And we may find ourselves in situations where we also don't know. Unlike, say, verifying someone's of legal age to drink and driver's license having a great deal of consistency, that, that may exist within things like vaccination cards. I'm just not sure that it does. And so I just want to point out that we would certainly do our best to be helpful in those situations and to play our enforcement role, but it is just a little different circumstance than with some, than something like masks that is fairly, you know, you've either got one on or you don't. So I, I put that out there and look for some additional guidance on exactly what circumstances we ought to require vaccinations, first for indoor settings, if you can help us define the limits of, of that kind of policy, and then, secondly, for any outdoor settings, including major events.
I think I said Councilmember Corr first, and then Councilmember Garner.
Yeah, I think, for me, I think on the vaccine or proof of test, I think there are logistics, obviously, to work out. Someone who has a California ID can have a QR code on their phone. Obviously, different states will be different, so there'll be more issues, but anyone in California can have a QR code on their phone. And, you know, if they lost their phone and their, and their wallet, they don't have their ID to go into a bar and drink. And it's not going to be perfect, right? You know, there'll be people who'll try and come up with, you know, fake IDs, just as they do to get into bars. And I do agree with you. I think, you know, we'll need, the businesses who want us to do this are going to have to be doing it, and we'll respond if there are issues and maybe spot check, but we can't put a lot of, you know, we have some code enforcement time, but our police have a lot of other things to be doing. So I agree with that. I do think in places where we know people are going to be taking off their masks, for most of the time they're there, which is bars and restaurants, because they're eating and drinking, we should require vaccine or proof of a test. And I think, you know, we can delegate to you how to best do that. The other areas some places are doing, you know, like for a gym, my inclination is to let them pick one or the other, right? Because people can all wear masks in a gym, they can all wear masks in a movie theater. If a business wants to monitor that versus a check-in to a movie theater or gym versus vaccines, I'm, I'm open to giving them, they have to pick one, but sort of giving those businesses more of that right, right? Retail could do the same thing, but it's very hard for them because they don't have someone at the door. You're not checking in at a retail business the way you are in a gym or buying tickets at a movie theater. But I do think in bars and restaurants, so far, you know, all the ones, at least that were speaking on the calls I was on, want us to do this. That's the safer way to go, and, you know, their employees, they're concerned about their employees, they're having enough trouble hiring now, they want to keep their employees safe, and we want to make sure we're keeping the kids of their employees safe. So I hope that is helpful on that issue, at least where, where I'm coming from. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Garner.
Thanks. In terms of outdoor events or just any kind of major event, I think there should be vaccination requirements. Anytime there's going to be a large number of people gathered closely together, I think that should be required. of people gathered closely together, I think that should be required. I am very concerned about the logistics. I understand where councilmember Coors comes from, but I am worried about the strain on our city staff and enforcing that, and the strain on the employees of the businesses as well. I, yeah, I just struggle with that because I am concerned about how it'll actually work in, in practice. I applaud all the businesses that are already doing it. I think that's fantastic. If they're, they're ready and willing to do that on their own. I just worry if, if there isn't capacity for, for others, what's going to happen for those businesses? And how is, how is that going to work with our code enforcement and officers who are the ones trying to remedy all of these logistical things? So I'm still thinking on that one.
Other comments? Mayor Protem, and then councilmember Wood?
Thank you. I agree with what I believe was the staff recommendation that we should begin with requiring masks for all indoor establishments, most particularly all of our retail establishments. I also believe that masks should be required for large events. I think we need to be very cautious as we start to move forward into what has been our typical time of celebrations with the parades that, that we have in November and December. And I know there's a tremendous amount of planning that goes into all of those, but I think we need to be monitoring as to what we can and cannot do. This is an area that's going to change very quickly. And we need to be prepared both to be able to hold those events and have the celebrations that we all enjoy, as well as prepared for the possibility that things could get worse before they get better, and that we might have to impose restrictions that none of us want to take and do. I think councilmember Coors raises a really good question when it comes to our bars and restaurants, when it comes to requiring vaccinations. What I would say we should do is recommend that and ask staff to study and come back and let's take a look at it. As councilmember Garner has indicated, and as we have heard consistently from our police and code enforcement staff over the course of the last year, they have been stretched and stretched and stretched incredibly thinly, you know. It's one thing to pass a rule and a requirement and to say that we're going to impose restrictions, but if we do not have the staffing to responsibly be able to enforce those rules, we create a expectation on the part of some parts of the public that rules are going to be there and they'll be enforced. And then we have other individuals who will test us to see whether or not we are going to enforce the rules. And when they find that we don't, they will believe that they have permission to, to violate them. So we've got to be careful about making sure we can responsibly enforce the rules we create.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood?
Thank you. Before I give my comments, I wanted to ask the city attorney or the city manager a very quick question. Can a business owner, such as a restaurant or a bar, regardless of what the city does, require a vaccination card to enter the, and or some sort of a test to enter the business?
Yes.
Okay. So an individual, so thank you very much, Mr. Ballinger. I appreciate that. I, I'm in, in alignment with councilmember Garner and mayor Protem Middleton, in that we don't want to overstep our bounds here, and we do have a, we don't really have the staffing to do everything that we want to be doing, I guess is what it comes down. However, I understand councilmember Coors' concern very much that we're trying to protect families and, and the people that are here and whatnot. So I, I'm in line with mayor Protem Middleton to make it a recommendation for a particular business to ask for vaccination cards and/or a COVID test to be able to enter, and leave that up to the business owner's individual discretion at this point.
Thank you. And city attorney, I know we've got comments about HIPAA and, you know, people's medical privacy when being asked for their COVID test results or vaccination, proof of vaccination to enter. Could you just explain that for the public, please?
Sure. There's been a lot of discussion over the last sixteen months or so about HIPAA, and there's, quite honestly, I think, some confusion over who HIPAA applies to. HIPAA does not apply to just a general business owner that is allowing a customer or patron to come in. HIPAA applies to either healthcare providers or business associates of those healthcare providers, and imposes certain privacy obligations on those healthcare providers and business associates. HIPAA does not prevent a restaurant or a bar from requiring as a condition to entry that evidence of vaccination be provided. And if somebody cannot provide that, then the business owner can provide a reasonable accommodation, such as providing food or their services to be delivered, as we've seen a lot of businesses do over the last sixteen months. So that's how HIPAA interplays with this and, and privacy concerns.
Thank you. I also got questions about discrimination, so saying it's discrimination to not allow people in a store or a restaurant if they have a different vaccination status. So can you explain the civil rights laws in terms of any discrimination concern?
Sure. It's, it's certainly not the discrimination that most laws and evolving norms apply to or that we think of. It is treating people differently, but the law generally allows businesses to treat people differently as long as it's not on a suspect classification. And vaccination status is not a suspect classification. And again, if the business provides some reasonable accommodation through provision of their services or products through another means, then there's no violation of law.
Thank you. As my law, well, constitutional law professor said, it's legal to discriminate. Basketball teams are allowed to pick tall people over short people. That's not illegal discrimination. Illegal discrimination was when it's a protected class, like by race or sex or gender identity, something like that, right?
Exactly. I discriminate every morning when I decide which side of the bed to get up on.
Thank you. So city staff can pull up that slide. I know it's not ideal for the public because you can't see our faces, but it's helpful for us as we go through this. So I heard unanimous support from city council on requiring masks indoors for all individuals, regardless of vaccination status. And then I heard just now from council members about vaccination, so vaccination requirements or recommendations for, for businesses. So I heard, I think, three, councilmember Garner, mayor Protem Middleton, and councilmember Wood, just to make that a recommendation, that businesses require proof of vaccination or a negative test for entry. I know, I've talked to a number of businesses, they're actually asking us to mandate it. I'm really concerned that in all of this, recommendations just aren't working, unfortunately. You know, the recommendation that, or even the requirement that people who are unvaccinated wearing, who can, should wear masks, you know, I don't think that's happening broadly. You know, the honor system here is, is just not working. So I'm a little concerned about putting the onus on workers and employees of these businesses to police their policies. What I keep hearing from businesses and workers is that they want to, you know, go, show the city seal of the order as protection, so that they're not engaging or policing these, these rules. And I think that our businesses are also asking for consistent policies across the city. So it's not just some good actors who are protecting bar and restaurant workers, which I'm very concerned about. A mask is essentially useless in a bar and a restaurant when you have it off and you're eating for ninety-five percent of the time you're in the restaurant. And I've also noticed people just being lazy about, you know, putting it on and off as you exit and enter. So my, I would be a different position to, to require for vaccination, proof of vaccination or a negative COVID test for bars and restaurants at the request of those businesses and those workers. But I, I appreciate the concerns that this might be a self-police issue, or that it might create a burden for city staff or a police department or coding compliance, which we did experience in the, you know, first surges and shutdowns. So that is where I am. I would love to hear other comments. I saw councilmember Garner just raised her hand.
Thank you. I mean, if, if businesses are wanting the seal of our approval, then great. I just don't want our code enforcement and officers to be spending all of their time enforcing the issue. I think if there's a desire for it, and obviously, it's, it's great to do, I, that is just my only concern with that, is just making sure that if we're requiring it, that we're not overburdening our staff in the process. That, to me, that does mean that there will be those businesses that don't check, and, and just don't participate in that. And we're, I just don't know that we're going to have a lot of ability to monitor that. But if that provides a comfort for those businesses that want to do it, but don't feel like they can because the city hasn't mandated it, then I'm okay with moving forward with that. I just don't want to see, I don't want us to have to see a bunch of our staff take leave because they're over, you know, overworked.
Thank you. I agree. I share those concerns. I saw councilmember Coors and then mayor Protem Middleton.
Yeah, and I agree with what you just said, councilmember Garner. I think, you know, the businesses have asked for it because it's really hard for some of them, unless they're said, we have no choice, we could be shut down. And I think where, you know, our code or police would come in is if they have someone who gets unruly, and they would come in anyway in that kind of situation. I don't think we should be, you know, going business to business on a regular basis, because that's not going to work. You know, if code or police get a call from people who, you know, are in a business and there are clear violations, they would go anyway. But I, I agree with that. We need to make it clear that we just don't have the personnel. We know we're trying to hire vacant positions right now, and we're down positions. So I think that makes sense to me as well.
Mayor Protem?
I'm really sympathetic to the businesses that would like us to issue a mandate. But respectfully, they have the legal authority today to issue a mandate within their business. We've heard, and I think it is the strong, strong majority of businesses that want to impose these rules, but it is not universal. And the outcry that we will hear from the businesses who do not support these kinds of mandates is going to be extremely loud. And we will be, if we immediately jump into this kind of a mandate, all of our attention will be focused on a very few, small number of businesses that are opposed to, to these kinds of restrictions. So I, and we simply do not have the staff to go out and do the enforcement across the board, so, somewhat reluctantly. But I, I think we should recommend study and then look to issuing broader mandates. We need to, to move with caution and with care.
You, councilmember Coors?
And while I appreciate that, mayor Protem, I will say that a vocal, a loud vocal minority who doesn't want to protect people's health, there's not a reason not to act. We've seen a three-hundred percent increase in the estimated number of cases in Palm Springs in just one week. We would be, we're double what the purple tier would have allowed just seven weeks ago. And to wait and not provide rules and direction, I think is a huge mistake. Eighty percent, and I thought a lot more if you take, of people who are eligible, of our residents have been vaccinated, and they don't want to be put in this situation. And I appreciate there are some businesses who won't do it, and they may get away with it. But, you know, that's true of people who commit fraud and do all kinds of other things, and tax evasion and everything else. And I, I don't think we should give in to the politics of a loud vocal minority who doesn't care about people's public health. And I know you care about people's public health, so I'm not putting you in that group by any means. But I think the businesses want, it's much easier for a business to say, I have to do this, for those who want to do it. And we should give them that tool. Because otherwise, the same argument would be, why require masks in any business then? Or in city hall? If a business can do it on their own, why not just say, we don't care. Go ahead. I don't see the distinction between the two.
Point taken. But I, I believe we need to move more cautiously.
Just end with one comment, because I think it's from a discussion in March. You know, if we, if we react too strongly, we inconvenience some people. If we act too cautiously, we kill some people. And I don't think that's a trade-off that's worth making. I don't think it's, I don't think it's that severe, councilmember Coors. I don't think we're killing people. I, I think if you're, if you're vaccinated, the idea is that you're not killing people, that you're, you know. So I just don't, I don't think it's that severe.
So for city staff and hearing that looks like council sort of split, and there might be someone who's, you know, can go with either side, do you have a recommendation? What direction do you want from us at this time in terms of the practical realities of rolling out either a recommendation for a vaccination and testing requirement for bars and restaurants, and I heard possibly gyms, versus a requirement? What's the ability that you've done, you know, to study or to, you know, engage businesses, knowing that, one, we don't have another city council meeting until September ninth, however, we can call a special meeting at any time to address these issues? So do you have a recommendation for us in terms of what direction you might need now?
Mayor and counsel, I think that there isn't a clear, strong majority. So I think you have the discretion to either kind of formalize the vote, so to speak, and see if it's three, two in favor of starting some of these requirements or not. I think absent that, the recommendation would be to stress to businesses the, the value of imposing something like that, the support that we would be there for them should they encounter reluctant patrons, and then to continue to study and observe this. And certainly, if circumstances change for the worse very quickly, we would always be able to schedule a follow-up council meeting, and we would go with a more restrained approach initially. But again, emphasize not only the recommendation, the legal ability, but the support system in place to help those that choose to enforce something like a mask, or sorry, a vaccine mandate.
Thank you. And city clerk, we're doing this by consensus on some of the issues, but when it's split, can we vote separately on separate issues? Or how would you like us to proceed?
Certainly. You can also take a straw poll, just, you know, going around to each other and take a straw poll vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Coors, you had your hand raised.
I was going to make a motion. If that's easier, and we can consider a straw poll or a motion, and maybe we take these one at a time on the three issues, just so people can register their voices. I think the first one was requiring masks inside all businesses for customers and employees. So why don't we start with that one?
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Second one I would make is that for restaurants and bars, because people will, the majority of time, will not be wearing masks, that a vaccine or a PCR COVID test 72 hours ahead is required effective in two weeks, with businesses advised that they will need to primarily self-enforce these rules.
I will second that motion if I can, and just say, I received probably half a dozen calls from businesses asking for that today, and we received, you know, overwhelming community public comments requesting that as well. And if someone, you know, say, you know, "I have a nine-month-old baby who can't be vaccinated," I mean, it's personal, right? I cannot go to public places very easily because I'm really worried about the transmission. And I'm sure there's lots of people with disabilities who's unable to get vaccinated. And I think it's important that we make sure that public spaces where people aren't wearing masks are safe ones.
And I would note, this is just indoors at those facilities. People can still be at a table at a bar or restaurant outdoors when they're eating and drinking without a mask. So this is just indoors, taking off masks.
Other discussion on that? Councilmember Woods?
You know, I guess I didn't realize the difference between indoors and outdoors, so that distinction is appreciated. I very much understand where Councilmember Coors is coming from and I very much support it, but I also very much support, and I think he got to the point of saying, "We as a city won't be using our resources to enforce it." The enforcement will come at the level of the establishment versus the level of the city. Is that correct in the motion?
Yeah, I mean, I think there'll be some times when, you know, police will get called, just like any other time. But yes, we're not going to be the ones checking for vaccination or going into restaurants and bars asking to see people's proof of vaccination. Thank you.
Will we have the ability to find businesses that are not in compliance, like we've done with other COVID orders? That's a question for staff.
If I can chime in, it sounds like what the council is saying is that you want this to be technically a violation of our emergency orders, but that it's, A, not going to be a thing that we're going to be proactively enforcing, it's going to be reactive, and second, that it's not going to be a high priority response issue. So that if our code enforcement or our police department staff are responding to other priority calls, they will respond to those other ones before they respond to this.
Thank you. Mayor Proton, did you have a comment as well?
I do. One, I think we need to be really clear what it is that we're voting on here, because I've heard both indoor and then I've heard what appears not to be a distinction between indoor and outdoor activity. And I want us to get to a place where individuals can safely go into bars and restaurants and retail establishments and have confidence that they're around other individuals who have been vaccinated. But I'm really nervous about walking down a path where we say we're going to issue a requirement, but we're not going to have fines, we're not going to have enforcement personnel acting. From a public policy standpoint, that's just not something that we've previously done when we take and say that we're putting the authority of the city of Palm Springs behind an action, particularly one affecting public health. But we're not in a position to be able to enforce those rules. I really struggle with the message that we end up conveying to the public and would rather see us move in slower steps to get to a place where I think all of us would like to get to.
Can I ask a question, though, Mayor Proton? So how is that different than, we're not going to be at retail establishments making sure everyone wears a mask, right? If the business calls us and says they're having a problem, we'll go. If we see a clear violation, we will enforce it and we'll issue fines. You know, we're not at every red light or stop sign or, you know, in every house to see if people have a gun that's not with a safety. But we still pass laws because the vast majority of people will follow the law if we pass it.
We pass the rule that I believe is being proposed here. We're going to have not stores such as Ralph's and Vons and Jensen's in all of our markets with signs at the front doors saying, "You must be masked to come in," for which anyone can see, but signs at the front doors saying that you have to be, show proof of vaccination.
Are we going, are we going into, in restaurants and bars, there's someone to check in with? Are we going to go into every supermarket every day and see if everyone's wearing their mask?
We have taken and responded to those, and the stores have been very, very good. Because we, that's something that a store can take and enforce. But to broadly say that a vaccination is required to enter a retail establishment, we can ask staff to go back to the slide. I'm not aware of any other locality in the country that has imposed that requirement.
Not for retail, but New York's doing it for restaurants, bars, and gyms, and movie theaters. San Francisco mayor has proposed it. So we're talking about place, for me, it's just places indoors where people are not going to be wearing their masks. That's all we're talking about. That's what the motion was.
Okay. So if the motion is...
Indoors at bars and restaurants, because people won't be wearing their masks.
In restaurants, that's...
That's it.
Okay.
And gyms?
And gyms.
I think gyms can have a choice, right? I mean, I'm not opposed if a gym wants to require vaccines, but otherwise, they have to have masks, right? Because they're an indoor business.
On any, on other retail establishments.
We're still not, we're still not offering, we're going to be able to enforce this.
City manager, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to offer counsel as you deliberate on this motion. Certainly, we will do our best, if this motion is approved, to adhere to the timeline. I would point out that even in the case of New York City, these rules are anticipated to be implemented over several weeks throughout August and September. A hard deadline in two weeks may present logistical challenges, even for some businesses. I talked to one today that I think, you know, may be willing to comply, but it's not one where they typically have a host seating an individual, but rather where, you know, patrons just enter the establishment. So some of those businesses may need to even hire staffing to operate a door or something like that. So I'm not sure about those issues, but just want to point out that as you deliberate, if you want to consider timeframe for implementation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, City Manager. So for the maker of the motion...
I'm good with, I would give it three weeks, and if you're running into issues, let us know. I just think before Labor Day, when this town is going to be mobbed, we should have these rules in place. And I appreciate fast food restaurants, you know, don't have people, you know, at the door. I think they're sort of the exception, but I'm giving them more time, I understand.
Thank you. So there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Can we have a vote on that motion, please?
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Garner? Councilmember Woods?
Yes, but we need to give it time. And fast food is a problem, and I think some of the other ones are a problem. We just have to work through those logistics. I'll leave that to City Manager.
Mayor Proton Middleton?
I will make this unanimous in order to express support for the full council as we move forward, but we need to give this time, and we need to be able to come back at the first meeting in September. What we are asking businesses to do is going to be an extremely heavy lift, and I'm not sure that we are going to find that we're able to carry it out in three weeks. I think we are asking more of our staff than we, than we should.
Motion passes five to zero, and I'll just clarify that this is to require restaurants and bars for indoor seating to require vaccine proof or testing within a short period of time, and to implement this within three weeks with primarily self-enforcement of the rules.
Thank you.
I guess the last issue we had was events, and so I guess the motion would be to require proof of vaccine or a PCR test within 72 hours for events, ticketed events that require a city permit. So someone having a party in their backyard, encouraged, but, and this is what we heard from the event promoters as well. So similar to what DNB is doing, what the Dino wants to do.
I'll second that. Thank you. So there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Can we have a roll? Mayor Proton, go ahead.
I am. This is going to be a much easier issue to take on, I believe, and a much easier one for us to responsibly enforce. All we're asking is if you're having a ticketed event in our city, that you have either vaccination or recent proof.
And I just want to make sure that we're clear at the staff level. I heard the word permitted, and then I heard the word ticketed, and those could be different things. So I think the original motion was for any event that would require a permit. Is that where this stands?
Yeah, so let me ask you. I mean, my thinking is if it's a non-ticket event that people can just show up at, it's hard to obviously do proof of vaccination or testing. I know the issue on some of the calls came up about Village Fest, given the crowds and that, you know, there's no way to obviously check. We couldn't require masks in that situation, so why don't we get a sense of counsel before we finalize what the motion may do?
Councilmember Garner?
Thank you. In terms of events like Village Fest, yes, I think, you know, masks is fine, but, right, I don't, again, we don't have the capacity to be checking for people's vaccination status. It's also an outdoor event, which I have less concerns about, especially because people aren't really congregating much together at something like Village Fest or a farmer's market. But in terms of the large-scale events, music festivals, et cetera, people are really right next to each other. That's my biggest concern.
Yeah, I share that. So City Manager, do we cover that with sort of ticketed, permanent events?
Mayor and council, it's a little difficult with pretty short timeframe to really anticipate everything that that would cover and everything that that would exclude, to be honest. I think that certainly captures the things that come to mind most, obviously, some of the significant events. It's, I think it's possible that there are some permitted events that are rather small, some ticketed events that are rather small, perhaps smaller than some events that don't require either, right? So I think this gets at a lot of what you're trying to do. It's just hard at this point to really pinpoint if we're covering most or, you know, a reasonable proximity.
So if we make it permanent ticket events or other events at your discretion that fit a goal?
I think with a little bit of direction, we can do our best to interpret that and likely come back to council where we have matters that need further clarification.
I'd like us, yeah, I'd like us to do large-scale ticketed events, and ticketed and permanent is fine. I think we have Splash House, obviously, over the summer, and then most of our large-scale events that are coming up are in the fall after our council meeting in September, though obviously they want notice about how they're supposed to proceed. And just so everyone knows, I did ask the county, Riverside County Public Health Department to attend that September 9th meeting so that they'll be available to give us some guidance about, you know, what large-scale events are really the most risky and, you know, which ones are not. So I'm hoping that we can give staff direction now for large-scale, you know, ticketed and permanent events, and then you can analyze that and bring back, you know, final recommendations if we need to at September 9th, if your analysis differs. Does that work?
Mayor, if that's a question for staff, I think we can work with that direction and continue to communicate any other challenges we see large scale. We'll need to operationalize a little bit, but that certainly narrows this. And then again, we would start to think about, are there large-scale events that aren't ticketed that we need to cover, or conversely, you know, ticketed items that we think you intend to cover but maybe aren't quite? So I think that helps.
Just for the City Manager, the CVV has, you know, places that will do the, you know, checking for these events and will do the testing. They make money if they do testing if people don't have vaccination proof, so we can get that information out. I can get that for you, so that can be shared with events as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. So there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero, and to clarify, this is to require proof of vaccine or PCR test for ticketed and city-permitted large-scale events.
Yes. Thank you. City staff, did you have other items on your slides that you wanted direction on?
Mayor and council, I don't think there are other significant items now that we've covered large-scale events. You know, we're making a distinction between indoor and outdoor, of course, so there may be a reason to revisit, you know, those outdoor events. You know, we've talked Village Fest, we've talked about some others. I heard possible, you know, mask requirement in those cases. So I suppose the last remaining question would be, are there other outdoor mask mandates, not going as far as, say, vaccination or proof of negative COVID test for crowded outdoor-type venues like Village Fest or others?
Discussion on that item?
I mean, I think in the short term, while we're dealing with these numbers, yes, for Village Fest, for any congregation, I can't, honestly, I can't think of another one other than Village Fest. I think the parades, all of our parades are too far away for us to make a determination on that right now. So it would just be Village Fest unless somebody else has an event they're aware of.
I agree. I think masks in that situation are probably a good idea for right now, and if we see the numbers go down, I think give authority to City Manager to get rid of it.
I agree. Require masks for Village Fest immediately, monitor the situation, and be prepared to change quickly depending on circumstances, and looking... And looking ahead to late fall and winter when we tend to have our parades, I think we should allow planning to go forth. But we need to make sure that everyone is aware that things could get worse and they could change very quickly.
Mayor and council, I anticipate that we can, if this proceeds, make some changes fairly quickly with Village Fest and putting up some signage and things. I'm not sure we'll get there tomorrow. We will do our best to implement that quickly. But, but just want to make that point, that tomorrow's event may be a little difficult, but, you know, preceding weeks should be okay.
That's fine. I saw a heads nod. Okay. Councilmember Coors?
Just have one other thing, which I talked to the city manager and city attorney about. I would suggest that appeals of COVID fines go the way like other tickets and most fines go, which is to the firm we use, who just looks at whether there was a violation or not rather than the border permit appeals, given they were cutting COVID fines by 80% for people who deliberately and knowingly fined, and a data ticket is the name. And that sort of undermined our code enforcement and police.
I agree. It was never city council's intention to have those appealable and cut by significant amounts since we had people who are ignoring the orders and putting people's public health at risk.
And I just think it's harder when it's a business that you go to and, you know, instead of an impartial third party who does this, to look at the facts.
City attorney, did you have a comment?
I was going to say, if that's the sense of the council, then staff can modify the resolution that was adopted last March, I believe it was, to indicate that the amount of the fines cannot be changed on appeal. And the city manager has discretion under our municipal code to designate which hearing officer hears those appeals.
Is that the direction of council? Are there other comments on that? So there's agreement? I'm seeing yes from at least three. Other issues that council members want to bring up in terms of COVID rules or measures? Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you. We did get some comments regarding the parklets this evening. Given the restrictions that we're moving to, I think it's important that we keep parklets open. I do think we need, without going into that whole long discussion of parklets all over again, they cannot obstruct another business, but we are going to, to need to have that open. More critically, I'm going to repeat what I've been saying for the last hour or so. We are asking a tremendous amount of our staff and our businesses and to do so in an extremely short period of time. And I think we need to give staff the discretion to prioritize and implement at a pace that is manageable the directions that we've given them. And if it turns out that they can do so well in three weeks, wonderful. But if it's going to take four, five, six weeks to do the job the right way, we've had experience over the last year that rushing into doing the right thing, however well-intentioned, has consequences that we come to regret. So let's give our, our teams the ability to use their judgment to implement at a pace that can be implemented.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I appreciate that city staff has been working incredibly hard, like I said, to staff up a public health department when truly when we applied for these jobs or ran for these jobs, we never expected to be doing this work. And the pandemic has made us do what government does not do very well and really isn't set up to do well, is make very quick decisions and quick right turns when things change. So I appreciate that sentiment and also the really hard work on our city staff, who's also not supposed to be doing council meetings right now, but is here tonight. I'll just say, you know, we're making really hard or hard decisions right now, quickly, to hopefully prevent much harder decisions in the near future. So I think a week, two weeks, three weeks makes a significant difference. We've seen that from the numbers and the increased rates. And six weeks, you know, is just too long to wait. So that's why we called an emergency special meeting. I worked with the city manager really closely to see when we could get that done, and we're bringing it forward now. So I will continue to work with the city manager and city staff to bring these issues back to city council. And, you know, we're not afraid to call special meetings. We did it all throughout last year to issue all of the rules that we have done, unfortunately have been forced to do because of the pandemic. So I appreciate that. Thank you to city staff. And we're just trying to find that line of where is the decisive action that's going to save lives and, you know, prevent community spread, you know, and how quickly can we get that done? So hopefully we are making that, threading that needle here tonight, and we'll continue to do that together. Any final comments before we move on in the agenda? Mayor Pro Tim?
Vaccinations are available. If you've not been vaccinated, please go out and get a vaccination. It saves lives. There are over 600,000 Americans, members of families all over the place that are dead. Each and every one of us has lost family or close personal friends. The vaccinations have been administered to millions of your fellow Americans, and it's helped save lives. Whatever your reluctance, consult with your physician. Go to the person that you trust to take care of your family in times of crisis and emergency and medical, when lives are at stake. Turn to those doctors and ask them whether or not you should be vaccinated. And if your physician, if your physician tells you that vaccination is safe and something you should do, and you find someone on the internet who disagrees with your doctor, listen to your doctor. Please get a vaccination. You're putting your life at risk by not doing so. You're putting other people's lives at risk by not doing so. None of us want to be doing the things that we're doing here tonight. And the more that individuals voluntarily go out and get that vaccination, the more lives we will save, the earlier we will be able to say we have lived through this crisis. But it is a crisis, and our country and each and every one of us is being tested. And I just cannot plead with you enough. Please get the vaccination.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Well said. So next, city clerk, is there any public comment on non-agenda items?
Uh, no.
Thank you. So next in the agenda, we move to closed session. Is that right?
Uh, correct.
Okay, thank you. So we will go into closed session and then come back out to the public meeting on Zoom and do a report of closed session and then adjourn.
How do we get into closed session? You need to do it by phone, given we're going to be done by seven. Is it the same link?
City attorney?
Yes, I believe so. And just for the public's benefit, we will be going into closed session to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, you'll stay on this Zoom, and anyone that's in the room that doesn't need to be in closed session will be put in the waiting room.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You have been added to the waiting room. You cannot talk or listen.
Thank you. So we will come back from closed session and the next item on the agenda is report of closed session from the city attorney.
Yes, Mayor and members of the city council, members of the public, the city council met in closed session to discuss the two items that are listed on the agenda and there was no reportable action.
Thank you. So the next item is adjournment. The next regular city council meeting will be held on September 9, 2021 at 5:30 p.m. Thank you everyone. Have a great evening. Take care. Stay safe.